My understanding that there is going to be a discussion about unified arts position at the middle school and exactly, I don't know how much detail it's going to be. But I want to take an opportunity to come up here and just kind of talk about that for a little bit. My daughter, when we came to Auburn Public Schools, my daughter entered in what, 4th grade? Does that sound right, 4th grade? She's my fact checker. 4th grade and we entered into the strings program with Mrs. Caruso. And, well, you know what, this is a school thing, so I'm going to ask for, can everybody raise their hand if they've ever seen Mr. Myers or Mrs. Caruso somehow manage to lead a group of like 100 children? None of the school committee has seen this in person?
Oh, you want to?
Oh, absolutely. Show of hands, yeah, absolutely.
Several times, yes.
It's incredible, it is remarkable, it is incredible, and it's beautiful. Unfortunately, the reality has been that there has not been an opportunity to continue the strings program at the middle school. My family is very fortunate, my daughter has taken what she has learned from the strings program at the middle school and she's actually in the Worcester County Philharmonic Orchestra playing violin. And we got to go to their concert on Sunday and it was beautiful. It literally brings tears to my eyes to sit in my living room and hear my daughter playing classical violin. And there is no way that she would have been doing that if she didn't have the opportunity to learn at first at Swiss. And we are very, very fortunate that we have the means to be able to have my daughter participate in that program. But there are many, many families in Auburn that don't have that opportunity. And it's incredibly important to me and to our family that if we can find a way to provide that opportunity for children that we do. Because we're very, very fortunate that we can do that. And I know there's a lot of families that can't even provide lunch for their children. And yet, we're having a conversation potentially today about providing this extra opportunity for our kids. And, you know, I mean, this is a season where, could you imagine the Christmas season without music? Could you imagine the Christmas season without hearing strings and harps and violins and cellos and all those things that make the beautiful music that we listen to every single day, especially in this holiday season? And if we don't invest in our children and teach them how to do these things, then we're not going to hear it from adults. And so I think it's incredibly important and that's why I'm here, and I bet you that's why a lot of these people are here too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Yeah, man. Yeah, go ahead. Jump on up. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, he had his hand up, that's all. No, 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 go ahead, you're fine. I just didn't want him to be ignored, that's all.
No worries. So, hello, thank you for having me here. My name's Chris Finan and I have two children who, if it wasn't for, I think, Mrs. Caruso, wouldn't have found their love of the violin. You know, it's amazing, I think that unfortunately in our country, it's always the fine arts that get cut first. And I think it gets cut to our detriment. I think, you know, when we're looking at budgets, we look at things like, you know, we need to hit a certain number. But that really doesn't help us to prepare our kids for life. You know, I drive by the beautiful high school that we've built and the football field and I think to myself, all the wonderful opportunities that are present there for the kids to, you know, really show and display their wonderful skills as athletes, team members, things like that. And you just see how important it is for the kids to participate in sports together. And I think one of the things that I loved about seeing my son play violin with Mrs. Caruso was he was in a team of sorts, not an athletic team, but certainly in a arts-based type team, where he could share his love of music with other young people his age. And it really gave him an opportunity to, just like the athletes on the football field or the baseball diamond, it gave him an opportunity to demonstrate and to show his skill. And it really made him very, very proud of all his hard work, which he should be. Now, we've been lucky to have the means to actually have our sons continue with the violin, but unfortunately, they aren't in an orchestra, so they just sort of play on their own, which is kind of isolating, you know? If you can imagine trying to play football by yourself or baseball by yourself, you probably would get pretty good at throwing the ball, but maybe not so much throwing the ball to another person, you know? And then that, and that's, there's a, you know, a real skill in learning to play and to cooperate with others. It goes well beyond just the beauty and majesty of the music, but it really teaches our kids to learn to work cooperatively with one another and to draw upon the strengths and skills of one another. And I think that that's something that's really, really important. You know, I just, I really would hope that we take a long look at this and do the right thing for our kids and for our community. The reality is that our children are going to go out into a world where what we do now is going to determine their future financial and other success. And I think having a robust fine arts department with an orchestra is a really crucial part of education. And, yeah, so thank you for the time and I appreciate you taking the time to listen and to think about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nathaniel Bixby. I'm a 7th grader at the middle school and I am in the band program right now. In 3rd grade, I signed up for cello and I really enjoyed it so much that in 5th grade, I transitioned over to band while still doing strings. And I was actually in the group that chose to do strings when I moved to the middle school, because at that time, Mrs. Caruso was still teaching kind of voluntarily at the middle school for the students that were going from Swiss to the middle school that were still wanting to do strings. And that year, there were just too many people that wanted to continue, that it just got cut. And it was kind of heartbreaking to join into that Zoom and someone say, "Sorry, the choice you made, we can't do it because the program is now terminated." And Mr. Myers said this one day in class, that it's hard to talk to all the students and parents that are transitioning from Swiss to say, "Hey, the instrument you've been playing for the past three years, you can't do it anymore. So you have to choose between chorus or band or just general music," which some people might not want to do, they might want to continue with what they're doing. And it always makes me feel better when I can do something on an instrument and play it well, because it feels like all the hours you spent practicing coming together, it just culminates into one moment that just kind of feels like when you're eating a piece of chocolate and it just melts in your mouth. It's very satisfying. And when you do it with other people, it makes it so much better. And instead of just doing it on your own, I think it'd be great if the program was brought back to the entire district so that people can continue doing what they enjoy.
There's a tough act to follow.
Well, it's my kids, so. I'm Jaclyn Bixby, I'm Nathaniel's mom, and I just wanted to follow up on that. I mean, it was very heartbreaking when he got off the Zoom with Mrs. Caruso, hearing that the strings program wasn't going to continue. And I know he was really hoping to be able to continue that. And he is thriving in band and he absolutely loves it, but it really would have been great for him to continue. And Nathaniel also has younger sister Josie, who's in 3rd grade this year, and she has followed in her brother's footsteps and is playing the cello this year. And I know as parents, my wife and I would be thrilled if she didn't have to have that same feeling that he had when she gets to the middle school, to not be able to continue. And just on a personal note, you know, I know, I feel any, any time spent on music education is never a waste of time. And I've continued, you know, I loved music, I loved my music teachers, and even as an adult, I've gone back to singing as a hobby. So I just think it just can do so much good, and I've seen it do so much good for both of my kids. So I really appreciate you taking the time to consider supporting this. Thanks.
I have cheat sheets.
Nathaniel is a new teenager, and I gotta tell you, I need cheat sheets. I don't know how he can get up here and talk so well. Good job, Nate.
My name is Katie Pachara, and I have four children that have been involved in the Auburn Public School system. They have taken advantage of band from when they were younger to chorus and also the theater program, and we have seen great benefits from that. My oldest was able to join the marching band as a 7th grader, which was a huge opportunity and not one that at all comes along, you know, as an opportunity to most 7th graders. So I just want to speak about what Nate had mentioned about how music makes them feel and how it's like eating chocolate. I'm going to speak about the science. Music is like a total brain workout. So listening to or learning a musical instrument increases the gray matter volume in various regions of your brain. And it strengthens the long-range connections between them. And as a doctor, as a nurse. So research-based evidence has shown that there can be improved perceptual and cognitive skills, executive functioning, enhanced verbal memory, spatial reasoning, literacy skills. It also reduces anxiety, blood pressure, pain, as well as it improves sleep quality, improves your mood and your mental alertness. There's also a calming effect with classical orchestra music. Maybe you have played the baby Bach for your children when they were younger, or maybe when you were in college yourself, or, you know, whichever, and you just were studying for a big exam, maybe you put on some Bach in the background. We know what it does to us. Research has also shown that there's a release of dopamine to spike pleasure, which also prevents the release of stress hormones. So we're all here, or most of us are here today, to speak and to ask for support of our music programs, particularly building upon an orchestra program for our middle school, high school, where we started at Swiss and it was really great and then it just halted. And we want to see this continue on with our middle school and into our high school. Based on what I just said, I think that it would be a disservice to our students to not improve their perceptual or cognitive skills, enhance verbal memory, reducing stress and anxiety, like all these different things that I've said about science. How can we not build upon our music program? If we want to see increases in our MCAS scores or things like that, then we need to work at these skills, but it doesn't always have to be bookwork, classroom work. It can be other things like music. And we're, it's like we're killing two birds with one stone. And honestly, like, who does not want a middle schooler or a high schooler to have spikes in pleasure and releasing of stress hormones, if we're thinking about hormones in middle school and high school? I think every teacher would love to have a decrease in the stress hormones, and I know as a parent with four kids, I would love to have a decrease in the stress hormones in my house. So with all of this, there is a clarity in thinking, making many school tasks when you're thinking about music, there's a clarity in the thinking, and it makes many school tasks such as studying, essay writing, it's more successful for the student and also more enjoyable. So we're here not just to ask of your support for the music program, but we're here also to ask, to look at our students' education and how we can really branch out and find ways to grow and improve all areas. And I, we really feel like this is an area that we should all be able to pull forward and support somehow, some way. And if not, let's find the way. Thank you.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Oh, absolutely, it's just, we're just trying to, just trying to control anybody, that's all, that's all. Yeah, you keep, next, absolutely, no problem.
I'll keep it really short. My name's Alex Morrow, I'm an alumni of the Auburn Public School system. I'm also a resident, I'm also the new teacher, a new music teacher at the Swiss School, teaching one day of strings on Fridays. I'm the beginning band director. Anecdotally, I picked up violin when I was in, I think, 4th grade. I saw the high school production of Fiddler on the Roof, I think it was 2007, and I was enamored by the violin player to the extent that I made my parents go out of their way to get me a violin so that I can learn how to play it. Throughout my time in 5th grade, my parents were also like, "You should probably play drums as well or a different instrument in band, just in case it doesn't work out." And I'm actually really happy that they suggested that, because at every stage, once I entered middle school, I entered the concert band, I tried to play violin. Unfortunately, concert band is not conducive to a violin, they're handing me flute parts, it just, it did not work out. To say briefly, I got steamrolled. I tried again as a freshman in high school, pretty much the exact same thing happened. Mr. Chadwick at the middle school and Mrs. Bailey at the high school did a wonderful job providing me material that I could learn, but I wasn't getting the support that I needed. And at every level, after one or less than a year, about a half a year at that school, I decided to switch back to percussion. And then at my time at university at UMass Lowell, I got the opportunity to play in an orchestra. And for the first two or three years there, I got steamrolled. It was, it was a lot of fun though, because I was surrounded with other musicians playing the same instrument as me. And my capabilities on the instrument soared farther than I honestly thought would possible, I thought would be possible. Freshman in high school Alex, if he saw senior in college Alex playing Mozart's Requiem, Requiem, front to back with a couple mistakes, he'd be floored, he'd be extremely excited to see it. I think I should just leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, come right up, yeah. We don't want you to be shortchanged.
I don't have a PowerPoint, but.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I have two boys. One is 5 years old and he is in kindergarten at Swiss. And the other one is 9 years old, who is at Swiss. And the 9 years old, Aiden, he is part of the string class with the cello. And we have a couple of, you know, discussions about it and he really loves it. And I've never seen him that happy to wake up that early in the morning and without a fuzz or anything, because it's so hard to shake him in the morning and wake him up or other days. But for that day, he goes on Tuesdays, he goes to bed very early, because he's going to wake up early for that class and to get off weight. Now, he's a little bit sad, because, well, we could tell him that, you know, the class or the committee has decided not to go or not to continue with it. But he continues with the violin privately, of course, and the piano, the little one with a violin as well. And, but I've never seen him to go in any of those classes that, that early and happy just to have that. I would say that Mr. Caruso is, she's doing a great job, and the reason that the kids love it, because, you know, the way she's introducing them and it's something, I mean, everything else is covered by, by the parents earlier. And let's not forget that Auburn has been one of, you know, a great examples around here in the Worcester County. And putting the music there, actually, you know, the string in very early age, it will bring us and, you know, upon to see, you know, the talents and, you know, what, what potential our city can have. And it's a great actual example for others to have it. So it evolves and expands our, you know, the, 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 let's, I don't know how to put it, but it'll make it, you know, a better and more competitive with other, you know, schools in higher ranks. And I think Auburn is doing a great job so far on that. And there's a sign over there that says, Auburn Public Schools, excellent in education by putting students first. So I believe we here are all, because your students and our kids are happy with that. And we would really love to have that as, as a class and very early stages. It will be very helpful. And that's all I would say.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm.
You'll be next, I promise.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I wasn't going to speak, but I just had a couple of things I wanted to say. Colin Myers is the band director of the middle school. I just wanted to kind of put it in a different perspective, and the way I typically look at it and is, if you had a middle school sports team, football, lacrosse, you name it, field hockey, and you had that team at the middle school and then you didn't have it at the high school, it makes no sense at all. And you start to question, how long is that middle school team actually going to be viable, knowing that there isn't a continuation there? And so students start at Swiss and they get to 6th grade, and it is true, I have those conversations every year for the past couple of years, saying, "I'm really sorry, the instrument that you love is not something that we offer here at the middle school. And so here's a couple of options." And, but it's a very difficult conversation to have with both students and parents, and that's essentially what it boils down to. And, you know, I, and I know that all of you can speak to this, is that COVID has had such an impact on our students, both socially and emotionally, and it's, every teacher is kind of trying to support students, and everybody in the building and all of you are really trying to support students through all of these difficult situations and the anxiety and stress that goes along with it. And the sense of connection and the social-emotional learning that happens in any ensemble, including strings, is truly unique. I am blessed to have my students for all three years at the middle school and that connection that I have with, with students. By the time you get to 8th grade, you know, there's, there's a lot of trust there, hopefully. And I just completely grow to love and adore my students and enjoy watching them get from awkward 6th grader to more mature adult. And I just want to say that the social-emotional learning piece of this is why I, why I teach music. You know, teaching the notes and all the songs is great, but it's really what Mr. Shano has on her board, which is life lessons. And she has a list of life lessons and she adds to it throughout the year. And that's really why kind of we do what we do, and I think it's important that we continue to offer students who are starting on something, a way to continue on in the middle school. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Erica Briesacher. My son Tobin was in strings, starting in Swiss and really wanting to go into middle school. He's actually opted to go to chorus because he wants to hold out for the possibility that he could pick violin back up. And it's been kind of interesting to sort of talk to him and his friends, especially the ones who have moved on to band, who've moved on to chorus, and just the, the difference in him when he was participating in strings in particular. And I'm not saying that it's different than band and it's not different than chorus, it all teaches some of the same things. But the uniqueness of the strings program, particularly as some other people have mentioned, when arts do get cut and are among the first to get cut, and then those cuts filter upwards. I teach at Worcester State, and our program in music is trying to get bigger, but it's reflective of the fact that a lot of music programs, particularly in strings, specialized interests or instruments, are getting cut at levels where it's not part of public education or viewed as integral to it. And one of the biggest things is that I come from a musical family, I was in band, I play many instruments, not as well as I used to back in the day when I practiced all the time. But it really does reinforce all the other pieces of education, whether it's math and counting and being in rhythm, being in time, tuning in to social cues, doing all of those things, that is what we want for well-rounded students. And the big thing is just, when we came to Auburn and when our son really talked about doing strings, he was excited because it was something other districts don't have. And that you would have to go to a specialized school, you would have to put a lot of money out to begin with, or travel and all of this. And to have it as part of our district is really special and reflective, I think, of some of the values that the district has. That attracted us to moving here. And so just as sort of another voice added to it in favor of all the music staff and in favor of the students who really, really, really have internalized the lessons they've learned through the strings program, being able to progress into older age and being able to perform with their friends and perform more complex music. How that's going to reinforce the other lessons and their other subjects, whether it's history, whether it's thinking about language as a literature, whether it is reinforcing some of those mathematical concepts that a kid like me wasn't great in math class, but put me in a music class and I suddenly could start to understand mathematical concepts. It's something that I think we would all see as really helpful to getting the district as a whole moving forward and all of our different students. And I really hope you would think really carefully about helping us expand the strings program. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Claire.
Can you speak into the microphone nice and long, okay? There you go.
Hi there, my name is Claire Smith and my dad taught to Mr. Myers. I was really sad after, after I knew that we could not have strings at the middle school. I started in 4th grade. I remember watching and listening to all of the other students. I loved, I love watching people learn and having that light bulb moment when you think, when you figure out fingering or like how to draw the bow correctly, it's just, it's so like satisfying to watch. In 5th grade, I saw band as another opportunity to learn music and I went for it, I chose percussion. And I just want to say, the first time I walked into the middle school band room and I saw all of the instruments set up, I was so happy and I was like, "Oh my gosh, people love music." And I was really sad that we could not have orchestra strings at the middle school at the same level that we could with band. And I remember using, I remember us string players using our time that we could have used to done homework or talk to our friends or text our friends that weren't going to the same school. I remember going down to the band room just so I could play violin with my fellow peers. And it's just so amazing to have that feeling. And now in band, I, I'm wa, it's a lot of the same feeling, I'm watching people. And when people finally figure something out, when they figure out how to make their embouchure correct, and they go from a squeaky saxophone to just a long clear note, it's so gratifying and satisfying to listen to that. And I believe that if we give students more opportunities to have that feeling, that it would just make everyone happier. Students could have more fun in school. And just the appeal of having more choices is really important, because a lot, a lot of pressure is pushed on sports. Auburn is really centered around a lot of sports. But music is also very important, like everyone else has said. And I believe that we can have that at the same level and that it would be really gratifying to a lot of people. And students, teachers, I'm sure that like Mr. Myers can attest to the same things that I am saying, but I think it'd be really satisfying to a lot of people if they can have the stuff. And just the appeal of having more choices is really important because a lot, a lot of pressure is pushed on sports. Auburn is really centered around a lot of sports, but music is also very important, like everyone else has said. And I believe that we can have that at the same level and that it would be really gratifying to a lot of people and students, teachers. I'm sure that like Mr. Myers can attest the same things that I am saying, but I think it'd be really satisfying to a lot of people if they can have this opportunity.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jillian Kais. I have a high schooler and a middle schooler. My middle schooler was in the strings program and has done band for a number of years. And really, and I think Claire took the words out of her mouth, she, she did so well up here. What I really was going to talk about is the, the emotional wellbeing of children who are in particularly the strings program. You know, my youngest is not a sporty kid. Playing sports for him is anxiety producing. And we do have a lot of sports in Auburn and it's great for a lot of kids, but it's not great for everybody. And, you know, band, band is really fun. But I was in the Swiss one day when Dr. Lopez came in and said, I thought there was something wrong with my printer. And then I realized, it's just the band practicing. And, you know, very early on, it is, it's pretty bad. And, you know, if you've been in school all day, you know, you really don't want to, even as a kid, you don't want to hear that. That's not, that's not going to reduce your anxiety. Strings is really the one thing that I have seen my, my kid be excited to go to and come home more relaxed and just lighter. So in particular, I really hope we do continue with the strings program in the district. I think it's, it's going to be good for the kids who just don't find their niche elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Beth Lancel. I have a daughter in third grade and she started playing the cello this year. I was thinking she'd pick the violin because she's this big. She picked the biggest one and she's having a great time and the music teachers are fantastic. And the day we went to sign up for the cello, I was overwhelmed at all the people that were there. I couldn't believe the, the amount of people in that gym. It was the first time I was in that gym and we waited two hours and we missed getting the, one of the cellos to bring home that day. And my daughter was very upset, even though we were going to get one next week. But she got her cello and now every Wednesday she's very excited to go to that class. And I just hope that it, she's able to have the opportunity to continue into the middle school. Thank you.
Hi, I'm April Campbell. I actually work full-time at Packard Hogg Elementary School and I've done almost every job in this district with the exception of administration, custodian and school nurse between pre-K and high school. I even volunteered for the meal program the last year and a half. I am coming to you as a kid who was very awkward when I was young. We moved a lot when I was a kid and that was hard, but I had a gift. I was a professional actress when I was a kid and that was something that at school was not really, there wasn't a place for that when you were in elementary school or what have you. And when I got to fifth grade, there was band and I started to play the flute. And then I got to middle school and they had, I mean, I feel very blessed. I grew, I did the rest of my growing up after moving around a lot in a town that had, in middle school, we had a band. There was a chorus, there was a select chorus, there was a jazz band, there was an orchestra. And I, as a very tiny kid, played the bass violin because somebody had to do it. I was always one of those kids, somebody had to do it. And I had to stand on the riser behind it to be able to reach the thing, but I did it. And then I tried the bass guitar because I tried the bass violin and somebody had to do it. And then by the time I got to high school, it turned out I was pretty good at things like music and I got the chance to do things like band. I had a similarly sized school to here in Auburn and we had almost 300 kids in our band. That's how big the band was. There were 150 kids in the orchestra and it just didn't occur to me that other high schools wouldn't have a jazz vocal ensemble, a matrículs group, a freshman chorus, a freshman band, a jazz vocal ensemble, a concert band, a marching band. You know, all, there were all kinds of chorus and band and, and, you know, orchestra opportunities. And then we came to Auburn and there was no orchestra and that just blew my mind. It just wasn't, it didn't occur to me that that wasn't a thing. And, you know, I eventually gave up professional acting and singing, oh well, but I have a degree in performing arts and music and psychology. And then I have a second degree in biology. And as it was pointed out earlier, I was not a strong math person, but taking those music classes in college and music theory, I got, I suddenly understood math enough that I got a biology degree and math is a little less painful. And it just, it expands your mind in so many ways. And as was also pointed out, we have so many opportunities for kids to try different sports. And, you know, my son plays soccer, but he's tried lacrosse and baseball. And if you go to the high school, you can play a sport three seasons out of the year, but you can't do orchestra. And you can't, like, there's, there's not as many opportunities for kids who maybe aren't athletic or aren't, you know, predisposed to certain types of things that we already support a lot, to have those different opportunities. Like, like it was pointed out, band is different than chorus, is different than strings. And I feel like the more opportunities we can give kids in a public school setting to try those things, like my son did the strings program starting in third grade and he's one of Nate's best friends and now I'm kicking myself that I didn't, didn't bring him. But he never in a million years would have tried the violin if that had not been something offered at Swanson Road Intermediate School by Mrs. Crusoe and Mr. Myers. You know, soccer, sure, there's all kinds of opportunities to do that. There's all kinds of opportunities to play baseball and lacrosse and what have you without it necessarily costing you a fortune. But, you know, we're not a family that really has the means to, you know, private lessons, you know, for the violin or the flute or anything like that. And honestly, I don't think it would have occurred to my son in a million years, I'm going to try the violin. I just don't think that would have happened. And he tried the violin in third grade and he loved it. And same thing, my kid has to be physically lifted out of bed in seventh grade every day. God love him, he will set three alarms and I physically lift him out of bed every morning. I'm going to have to hire somebody when he goes to college. But he got out of bed for strings, up early in the morning and he went to strings and he loved it. And his heart was broken when it wasn't going to be something he could do in sixth grade. And he picked up the flute in fifth grade because he was like, hey, I like this orchestra thing, I'm going to try the flute. And so he's still playing the flute and maybe someday he'll get my really expensive Jupiter, but, you know, we're not there yet. But Mr. Myers helped instill that love of, you know, band continuing for him in middle school, but he would love the opportunity to pick up that violin again and not just play by himself in his room, but exactly, to, to play as a team with friends, to want to be better because he doesn't want to be bringing the violin section down or what have you. And, you know, he excels in things like math and soccer and what have you. And he's maybe never going to be the best violin or flute player in the world, but that is a side of him that never would have happened without the chance to do that at public school. And, you know, for me as a kid, that was my chance to shine in public school. It was a, a chance for me to say, hey, look, I'm good at something that's not, you know, maybe what the popular kids are doing or whatever. And, you know, increase your confidence to the point where you're like, oh, I am a popular kid. And I feel like that's so good for these kids to expand their minds. It's not just math, it's not just science. When I work in the schools and I see some kids that struggle in a classroom to sit still, that struggle to read, what have you, and then they go to music class and they're dancing and they're having a great time. And that may be the only time in their day when they feel good about themselves as a student because the rest of it is such a struggle. And that's just a chance for them to bloom and grow. And then they get to those older grades and they have opportunities to get more specific with their passions and try the violin, try the flute. And that's, again, not something that a lot of these kids are going to have a chance to do if we don't give them that opportunity in a safe setting that's not costing them a lot of money, that their peers are doing with them versus I'm on YouTube trying to learn these things on my own. And I feel like it would be a real gift to these students in the midst of all this craziness to have that chance to do something that's maybe a little in their minds, less traditional school stuff. So I feel like my kid has really benefited from it and he's, you know, really enjoyed blooming and growing with his friends that have done it. And I'm really proud of these kids standing up here today and I think that's part of where they get that courage is these kinds of programs. So I'd really like to see us support that as much as we support a science or a math or a reading. You know, we have intervention groups. This is an intervention group. This is a way to help these kids' minds and bodies and spirits grow. So I hope we can put it back in place. So thank you.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none. I, I would just say that I don't think, and I appreciate all of your comments, excellent and heartfelt certainly. And I couldn't agree more, I'm being a musician myself and being part of a board that's always supported the arts, supported music, supported the sports, all equally. I don't, I could, I can't lay out the numbers for you per item, per article, but we've supported everything. We, we started, since I've been on this committee, we started the, the marching band, which was a, a great undertaking. So just don't, just don't think that, that we're not listening, we're not understanding. We totally appreciate the comments and I, I don't mean to speak for the rest of the board, they'll have their opportunity. But I will say that in the past couple of years, our main concern, well, almost couple of years, has been keeping students and teachers in the school or getting them back into the school. Mr. Handfield has been overwhelmed and we're trying to use the budget to support all types of things that are going to make our kids more healthy, mentally healthy, physically healthy. Right now, we're concentrating on the social and emotional piece. I can't speak specifically to this because I had no idea this was going to happen. I'd like to know, get a little bit more background on it, where this conversation started, where the strings ended. I certainly don't want to see a dead end for any students, whether it's athletically or through the arts. I don't want them to hit that brick wall and be as upset as some of you certainly seem to be. And I sympathize, again, being a musician. Having my, my own children go through some of these programs, it meant the world to them. And I do believe it makes them well-rounded. And I do believe that it makes them feel better emotionally and more a part of the greater good, the bigger team, the larger team. So I understand all that. So we will continue to support, I will continue to support music at every level, support the arts at every level, support the athletics at every level. And I always feel like I want to keep that equal. I don't know, again, how the numbers work out, does it come out equal? How many students are involved in this, how many are involved in that? I can't give you those numbers, not right off the top of my head. Again, this is the first I'm hearing of this. But just understand you always have, your children always have our support across the board, no matter what they do for a hobby, for a sport, whether it's acting. I, I thought we were in a good place. Again, this is the first I'm hearing that we're not in a good place. So we will certainly have those discussions and maybe Dr. Handfield can clarify some things once the committee's had an opportunity to speak. Anything else from the committee?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming. I'm a retired teacher from Auburn and I was thrilled when I heard that Auburn had started the strings program. And it goes beyond my wildest nightmare that they would have stopped it at some point. I assumed that once they started it, I think it was with third grade, it would go all the way through for the children. Auburn doesn't usually do that. They don't like tease kids into, oh, join this, oh, this will be fun, and then pull it out from under them. And this is the first I've heard of it. I don't know, how many years has it been since they've had the strings at?
2015.
So through the chair, so the strings program predated my existence as the superintendent. And so I think really, you know, now obviously taking over during COVID and then much like yourself, this, this, and first let me just say thank you all very much. I really, and especially to, to our students, you, you guys are amazing, just so amazing. The courage to stand up before adults and speak your truth is, is something that we as adults struggle to do. And so I, I want to applaud you first and foremost for that. I know how hard it is to, to, I, I get it, on many levels, how hard it is to get up and talk publicly, you know, and especially at your ages. So great job, great job. So again, through the chair, so this program predated my existence as a superintendent. I was still the high school principal and I believe it began in 2015, correct? And honestly, I, I know that it was in grades three and four. I didn't know any, I, I would have had no, you know, interaction with the program in my previous role. So I don't have a lot of the information as to why it stopped at, because right now, as I understand it, I think it stops after grade four. There's no grade five?
Grade five.
Okay, so there's no grade five and there's nothing in the middle school. And so this is kind of a circumstance that I guess we're inheriting this year as we're trying to resume some normalcy back into the school system. And, you know, one of these, one of the pieces of normalcy is how do we, as you said, Mrs. Holloway, how do we move this program forward? What I would say to you is that the formal budget process or discussion starts December the 15th and that's just what we do every year. I can tell you from my preliminary review of the budgets that there is a proposal in, you know, for a, a strings teacher, I believe at the point six percent, yeah, point six percent level. And, you know, like we do every year, we evaluate all of the budget requests in from the buildings and then we have to figure out, you know, dollars and cents, you know, what's the state giving us, what's the town giving us, what are our obligations, you know, on the, the salary side. There's a lot of moving pieces to it. But I don't want, I don't say that to give you the impression that there's not support here. I mean, I keep it on the down low, but my saxophone's in the next room. It really is, it's in my bookcase. So, you know, I, I fully appreciate, you know, what, what we're talking about here this evening. And, you know, as, as Mr. Scobie said, this came to my, my personal attention very, very late in terms of, of this issue. And so, you know, I would echo Mr. Scobie's comments to say, and I'm sure of the rest of the boards as well, that, you know, we are committed to making sure that all of our kids have pathways and programs that meet their individual needs to the best that we can do so. And so that certainly is going to be, you know, kind of the principle, you know, that we all carry with us as we start the budget process. It really would be, really would be premature of me to comment on it further at this point, only because we have a process and a procedure that we need to go through. But I, I just need you to know you've been, you've been heard loud and clear, you know, I, I think on behalf of all of us, yeah, we support you a thousand percent and we support, you know, what, what it is we're trying to do. Intuitively, again, it makes no sense that we would go three, four and then stop. And I believe the past history, and this is, this is the part that I do know because it was at the high school, was I believe the previous agreement was after grades three and four, they could go to the Worcester Youth Symphony Orchestra, right? Is that, if they were interested in participating further?
They made an agreement, if I can speak.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
They, they made an agreement to, to offer some reduced tuition rates.
Okay.
For Auburn students and.
Because we were in exchange for the use of the building.
And they weren't, I think there was 10 and they were very rarely taken because students run at that level where they got audition and make it.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, that's a pretty high level, I get it.
When you, when you came forward with the proposal, like that, this was before you were superintendent, we came forward with a proposal to start this. The, the idea was, you know, if, if we're not going to get the, the middle school position.
Sure.
We won't start, right? Like there's no.
Yeah, right, sure.
So we'll, you know, and then it's absolutely short and it just didn't happen.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I appreciate, yeah, and I appreciate it. I appreciate what everybody's saying and I.
I just wanted, uh, with, with, it does honor that agreement.
Yes.
So that, that's still.
So it's, so it's still on the table, so it's, okay. Good, good, good to know.
And position. I believe it's 10, but I think you've only had a couple of students take advantage of it because.
Who've met the level of.
They're not, they're not there.
Of expertise, yeah. I understand.
Okay, if, if we're going to have any, any more comments from the citizens, I'm just going to ask that you go up to the microphone so the people at home can get both sides of the conversation instead of thinking that Dr. Handfield's talking to himself. Which may or may not have happened.
Long before tonight, so don't worry about it. I was doing that long before tonight, so don't worry about it.
If he drags out the saxophone, we're in trouble.
That being said, I just have one question. Is this the first official or formal conversation that you've had about this, Dr. Handfield?
This is the first formal, let's sit down and talk about this conversation.
Okay, well.
And so.
That's a little bit, to me, that's a little bit upside down. Not to say I don't appreciate all of your comments.
No, and I, no, and.
You are welcomed here, every meeting, it's usually empty. I welcome you for any meeting you want to come up to, but that just seems a little bit, I don't know.
No, it is, but, but that's, but that's, but that's, and I, through the chair, and I agree with you, but that's, that's immaterial, like, that doesn't bother me. I mean, I, this, this conversation, you know, whether it happens December 1st, or, you know, as long as it's, it's happening before we start the budget season is really what's important. You know, obviously, you obviously prefer to be kind of prepared for it before you walk into it, but, you know, it's not like we're not, you know, able to, you know, to have this conversation, so, no, I.
Katie, if you'd like to just step up there to speak. I'm just going to ask that you keep it brief, it's usually three minutes per person, and if everyone goes up twice, we could be here for a while.
I, I think that that's the point, like, we know that the budget is, is coming up, and time is, you know, like, we need to be aware of time. And so we, with COVID, it kind of like abruptly stopped a lot of things.
Sure.
So we're still kind of getting back into it, and even with music and chorus especially, like COVID with like singing or doing, doing like the flute, there's like, I mean, we're, we're here talking in masks. So this is why we're, you know, the timing is kind of wonky. So we wanted to come and bring forth as much information as we can, so that you guys, as you discuss and review things, you can have the, the best information from, from the kids' point of view, from our point of view, that we can.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and through the chair, I just want to say thanks also for coming in. I love it when people come in to speak to us. This is also the first that I'm hearing of it, literally as I sat down. Just please know that we're always, as we've all said, we've, we're always supporting you. The COVID budget has been like getting blood from a stone. So no, we will do our very best, and we have to take, you know, even what principals are going to tell us, and even their buildings too, but thank you even for coming in. I know it's, it's a big deal even to just come in and say this is what we want. Because a lot of times we, you would be surprised at what we don't hear, and that's not even because of anyone's, you know, I mean, we, some of us don't even have to have kids in some of those schools. So we just really appreciate it, and please feel free to always come in and reach out as well.
Thank you for that.
Through the chair, also, I'm so sorry if we did cut something, I don't remember ever cutting anything.
Nothing's been cut.
So, okay. I've just heard the word "cut" a lot, and I, it's been a long two years, so maybe. Okay, good, so that's, that makes me feel better that we didn't cut any program. I, I know my nephew, he's a sixth grader at the middle school, and he's constantly playing The Simpsons on his clarinet. I actually brought him to pick up his clarinet. And he's a kid who, you know, he's probably not going to be big into sports and needs to find his niche, and he found it in the clarinet this year, his favorite part of his first year at middle school. So I get that, but I just wanted to apologize, but I'm glad to hear, I don't have to, that we didn't cut anything. Okay, thank you.
No, through the chair, I think the best description is probably, it's a program that's in transition, and we need to, we need to kind of find a way to, to keep moving this forward, and, you know, I mean, starting in 2015.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's not going to be 2022, 20, you know, I mean, it's seven years, it's a long time, so.
Dr. Handfield, what department head will be having this in their budget?
So that will be the direct, the co-directors of Fine Arts and Music, so that'll be Ms. Bailey and Ms. Garrow.
Oh.
So they'll be able to, they'll, they'll be speaking to it on the 15th of December.
Okay, well, that'd be good.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just one quick comment, thank you, I'll reiterate what everyone else said, but thank you all for coming. It does mean a lot, especially hearing from the kids in the unfortunate circumstances that they had to stop doing something they loved. I've been on the committee eight years, seven or eight years, and I'm thinking back while everyone's talking, like, I know we didn't cut anything, like, we would never cut, you know, especially before COVID, when our budgets were healthy and robust. So I get, I think it was kind of a trade-off where it was, strings are going to stop at fourth grade, but then the Worcester Orchestra kicks in, and I, I guess it wasn't, it was my assumption that it wasn't as difficult to participate in that as it really is.
I agree, that's what we, that was never presented to us.
Yeah, that never came across as being an impossibility, when you have, my daughter, both my kids were part of the Strings, and there were so many kids, I mean, falling off the stage during their, their big debut, you know, at the high school. So, I, yeah, I think it's something we definitely need to talk about and revisit and look at again, especially if that Worcester Orchestra is not really working out the way it was portrayed it was going to work out, so. But thank you all very much for coming.
Is that all? Okay, well, we, again, I appreciate you coming in. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but if you stay for this one, you have to stay for all of them. And you're not going to like that.
I don't think you're going to want to.
It tends to get very boring when we don't have company.
Yeah, but thank you again.
But thank you all, we will certainly take all of that into consideration, especially what the youngsters had to say, that was awesome.
Great job.
Much appreciated. You're all dismissed.
Thank you.
He needs a chance to wear his violin cufflinks again.
Have a great night.
Bye.
Thank you.
I know you.
Nathan.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Mrs. Holloway, I had you, must add you in sixth grade.
Thank you, take care.
Yep.
Claire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's hard.
Social studies in there.
Hi, Bill, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Well, the middle school.
No, I'm just kidding.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
Oh, you're on the other team!
Oh, okay, all right. That's a good time.
You must, you have a sibling, don't you?
Thank you, have a good day.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Because I saw the name on the hirees, and I went, oh, that must be someone I had. Or a brother of someone I had. There it is, there it is.
Good night.
Welcome to Auburn.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Have a great night.
Yeah.
Bye.
That's good.
I wish we could get an infusion of money and just start it up right away, you know, like a millionaire comes in, and, yeah, my dreams.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other citizens' comments, not related to strings? Okay. We move on to special recognitions, Dr. Handfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to start this evening with some special recognitions in response to an application by Sarah Lemovitz. The Auburn Integrated Preschool has been chosen to participate in America's Tooth Fairy Program.
Oh.
Each year, Mrs. Lemovitz teaches all children a dental health lesson and utilizes grant funds to purchase materials. This year, AmericasToothFairy.org will be sending us 144 complimentary toothbrushes and teaching items. Preschool students will learn about dental health in February for National Dental Health Month. So that's exciting. And we thank Mrs. Lemovitz for her continued dedication to our kids in the preschool. Moving on to Christine Robbins, STEM teacher at Auburn Middle School. She was awarded three grants this school year, a mass agricultural grant focused on pickling and canning in the classroom, ASM Materials Foundation's grant for a Wacky Shoes Project, and Implement Engineering Grant called What's Your Technology Project? The grants provide a total of $1,200 to benefit the students at Auburn Middle School. So again, we applaud Mrs. Robbins for her dedication and bringing in some very unique pieces to the curriculum at the middle school. And then finally, Karen Shogren, our nurse at the Auburn Middle School, was awarded three grants this school year, oh, excuse me, Karen Shogren, Nurse at Auburn Middle School, received an $800 grant from the David Broder Foundation to create and outfit a calming space for kids to relax and process their emotions. So I'm very proud of Nurse Shogren and for bringing a sizable grant and to help support the social and emotional needs of our students.
It's great that, that, again, with, with everything that's going on in our schools, trying to keep the kids healthy, trying to keep them in the buildings, trying to keep them in their seats, trying to keep everyone, you know, mentally stable and emotionally well, that the, the teachers, leadership, all of our staff, continue to try to do the little bit extra that's going to help the students out, and that's, it's much appreciated. I mean, that just goes to show you the dedication, they, they just continue. Outside of their, you know, their regular hours, they're working on grants, they're working on getting, getting toothbrushes. It runs the gamut, the things that they do behind the scenes that they're never recognized for, so I just like to take this opportunity to thank, to thank our entire staff from the top down, or from the bottom up, I'm sorry.
Perhaps the bottom up.
I would now extend a motion to accept the minutes of 10:20:21.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. And I don't think we have any student representatives this evening?
Oh, we have Ally, are you there?
Oh, we do?
Yeah, Ally's been hanging around.
Ally's the A on there, okay.
Ally's still with.
Ally!
Hi, Ally.
Hi.
Hi, sorry to keep you waiting.
Oh, no worries. So right now, our trimester is coming to a close, so students are working hard to get their grades up and finish off the trimester strong. And ball sports are also ending up, so the Auburn Girls and Boys varsity soccer teams made playoffs, and their season just finished up. I know football just ended their season with their last home game Thursday, last Thursday, and they also have a Thanksgiving game next Thursday away in Leicester. And the field hockey cross country and golf seasons are also just ending up. This Saturday and Sunday, the class of 2023 is hosting a community-wide flea parade, so they volunteer to greet people's leaves across the town of Auburn Free Charge, just to help some people out. Next week, Student Council is hosting a breakfast appreciation for the teachers, just as a way to thank them for their efforts and hard work in a tough school year. And Student Council has also put together spirit days for next week, for our shortened week before break. So we have pajama day on Monday, fall attire on Tuesday, and Auburn Day on Wednesday.
Excellent. Wow, you were very prepared. Any questions for Ally?
Thank you.
Ally, even if someone is reasonably or somewhat healthy like myself, could I still have my leaves taken care of, or is that just for people that, okay, just wondering? Because I'm getting tired of them, I've already done them once, and I don't feel like doing them a second time. So maybe I'll reach out.
You just have to make a donation.
Excuse me?
Just a suggested donation.
Oh, I still have to pay? That's fine, as long as it's going to a good cause. Any other questions or comments for Ally? Any serious questions? No?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, Ally.
Thank you, Ally, as always.
Thank you, good night.
Great job, good night. She just rattled that right off, she was ready to go.
She's good, she's good.
She probably has to go study.
She's good.
Okay, we now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as we do every meeting, we review kind of our COVID cases and talk about other pertinent details. We're starting to see a little bit of an increase, going back to last Wednesday, we had two cases in the schools, but then, and over the last four days, we're seeing numbers of three, four, six, and six. So a little bit concerning, not terribly surprising, given the, the nature of the colder weather coming. So we're going to continue to keep our eyes on that. Test and stay continues to, to go very well in our buildings and has been just an absolute godsend for students who've been deemed close contacts, so that's keeping a lot of our kids in building, and that program continues to go really well. And Dr. Chamberlain will probably talk a little bit more about some of those things in her report. State mask extension, just in case people didn't see it, Commissioner Riley has announced that the state's mask extension will continue through at least January 15th of 2022. I think, as I may have expressed in previous meetings, the state will call for, on a weekly basis, the COVID cases in each school district, and they're using that information along with other public health data to kind of inform their decisions on masking and things of that nature. So on the 15th of January, we expect to have some direction as to whether or not we would continue, or if it will be given back to local control. So we'll have to wait and see how that goes, but right now, we're in them through January the 15th.
If it were to go back to local control, you believe that it would still be that 80% number that they're, they're looking at?
Yeah, so through the chair, that's a great question. I think, if it goes back to local control, I, I believe it's going to be what local, what you decide, what we, what you ultimately decide as a school committee. You know, we had talked in August about, before the commissioner had come out with a threshold, we had talked about creating a threshold. You know, you'll see, you'll see in the data a little bit later when Dr. Chamberlain speaks about it, I mean, our student data is not, or our student percentages are not really great right now in terms of vaccinated students. Dr. Chamberlain has an updated staff vaccination, and every building is north of that 80% threshold, and that's all 400, that's reporting on all 409 employees in the Auburn Public Schools, that's teachers, custodians, you know, calf workers, everybody. So we were able to, to get all of that information. So we'll see, we'll see, that, I think it'll be a conversation point for January if it does get kicked back to local control, you know, what we do with that. And I think a lot of it's going to be dependent upon, you know, what current vaccination rates may be among our students as we'll start to get some numbers with our younger kids, and we'll be able to continue to update our, our information for our older kids. And then we'll have to see and have a, you know, have a discussion as a community about it.
Sounds good. Any comments?
Through the chair, I just, if we think that's coming, I would like to start at least preliminary discussions in December, if we think it's going to come back to us, because you know, the minute that is rate, that's kicked back to.
Yeah, it's, it's.
We'll have, you know.
Well, it, yeah.
I think it's just worth not, not waiting.
Sure, no, and I, and through the chair, I, I don't disagree with you, the difficulty with that is just not knowing what the state's going to tell you on the 15th, that's all. But I, I think it's certainly something we could put on, you know, the December 1st school committee agenda and talk about maybe further. But, you know, to what extent we can go down that, that road right now, I don't know. But, I mean, we could certainly, you know, think about that some more and bring it back for discussion. Happy to, yeah, it's fine with me.
Sounds good. Okay, we now move on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of months ago, we had, we had some discussion, I don't know if it was at the committee level, but I know we had some discussion about, as part of kind of getting our students back into the rhythm of life, if you will, having been out of, you know, schools and having been in kind of this COVID cyber world, we had talked about trying to put together some programming for our kids around cyber safety, cyber bullying prevention, protecting your digital footprint, Zoom, so all of those things. Happy to report that District Attorney's Office under DA Joe Early has delivered or will be delivering programs on cyber safety, cyber bullying, and protecting your digital footprint to Swiss, AMS, and AHS via Zoom. AHS actually has already had the program delivered in their building. Swanson Road has a number of sessions scheduled, and Auburn Middle School, I think, is in the middle of scheduling their sessions. But again, you know, as part of our continued work to try and help our students be safe, you know, in these various cyber venues, especially in light of the COVID pieces and the dysregulation in behaviors and things of that nature, you know, we're trying to do all that we can to help keep our kids safe as they're online more and more and more. So I'm very happy for, for, that we can be able to do that. Thank District Attorney Joe Early very, very much for his, his offices willing to, to come out and, and talk with our kids, and for our principals for, for ultimately scheduling that and setting those programs up, so I'm trying to do all the right things.
Thank you.
Just in terms of moving on to budget update, as I had expressed to the group a little bit earlier, we've started reviewing our FY23 budget, and as you know, we'll meet about and, and, you know, if we have any kind of preliminary numbers at that point, and then we'll continue to refine that number, you know, with the committee, and have a draft budget number to the town, by town charter, by the second Monday in January, and again, it's a draft, but have something to send forward to them for consideration. And, you know, it, it's, it's in terms of where we are right now, what's the budget forecast, I mean, it's not great. It's not great, you know, we're still kind of in the midst of COVID, as much as we thought we would be past kind of the COVID bubble, we all know that we're far from it, and that this year is, has been just as a difficult, you know, if not more so than, than last year. So, as a, as an old friend of mine used to say, it's a long way to May, in terms of, you know, that May finish line for getting a budget across.
May, what's that?
In town hall, I know, to town meeting, it's a long way to May, but we're gonna start the, we're gonna start the run in a couple of weeks, you know, to get to May, so we will, as always, bring you presentations that are geared to our strategic plan, and will be, I think, will exemplify our commitment, you know, to, to all programs for kids, and doing our very best, you know, with, with what we have for resources, so look forward to those presentations in two weeks.
Sounds great.
And that's it from the superintendent's chair.
Alright.
For this evening.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Katie, you trying to go to the podium again? No.
Good night.
Good night.
You're welcome, bye, Katie.
Alright, I thought she was gonna steal your spot, Dr. Chamberlain. We now move on to teaching and learning.
Thank you very much. Hard to follow some of those kids and their eloquence as they spoke, but just to share with you, what's exciting about this year, and we did a lot of work and a lot of teaching and learning last year, but really, the vibe in the schools feels a lot more normal this year, right, which is awesome. And we're continuing to put added emphasis on offering professional development for our teachers. And so one of the options I've gone back to is a, a padlet, it's like a newsletter, called Words from West, and in that, you know, I'm trying to provide teachers options, self-paced options, options outside of the school day, free options, very high-quality options, to get things for PDPs around English language learners, special education, those kinds of things. So I sent one out recently, it was very well-received, and I've coupled that now with some information I received based on How Anxiety Presents in Kids in Schools, and I put that together in a similar format. It was a training I kind of stumbled upon last minute and said, oh, I've heard of this Jessica Minahan, who wrote a book called The Behavior Code, so I'm gonna go, cause it was like one of those days I could do it, it was virtual. And the information that came out of it was tremendous, and so I, I took all kinds of notes, credited her with all the information, sent it out to staff, and I will tell you that the response I received back from staff was overwhelming, appreciative of the information. A couple of folks are doing a follow-up training with her, so a lot of good stuff happening, a lot of things that are different than before, but nonetheless, we're learning a lot, right, about how we can connect with kids and what they really need by improving our own practice. So that's been exciting, to be back really having those conversations about things. Moving on to the vaccination reporting, I did share with you a separate sheet, which is updated as of today. When I, when this first went to press last week, I didn't have all of the results in yet, but happy to report that all of our schools are at or above 80% vaccination rate for staff, because Dr. Hanfield said, all staff. Cafeteria, custodians, that, that includes everyone, so some results continue to trickle in, but none that were going to change any of these figures, so I didn't include them, but that's exciting, and, and really good news, I think.
Through the chair, when I looked through our notes, even just from last week, I, I like shrieked, my husband thought, there's a bug in the kitchen or something. I was, I'm so relieved that, that, that's kind of more, that, that we're there than where we thought we were.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fantastic. Thank you for pulling all that together.
So, you know, it's just, everybody's busy, right? So getting folks to just, we knew that the numbers were higher, it was just getting them to tell us, really, so that's good.
Thank you for doing the legwork, Dave.
Yeah, it's good.
Pull the teeth.
And then, you know, we all know now, right, our youngest kids are eligible to be vaccinated, so working with the Board of Health, they're collaborating with the Auburn Pharmacy to try and put a clinic together for vaccinations for kids five to 11 years old. I put out a feeler to see who, how many would be interested, and we're at almost 200 students that would be interested in receiving the vaccine, so I heard from Darlene Coyle today, the order has been placed for the vaccine, the pharmacy doesn't want to schedule the date till they have it, right, cause we all know there are all kinds of shipping issues now, but that's on its way, so I'm hoping it's sooner than later, but a lot of real, really good interest about that, so that's very exciting. I'll also, oh, sorry, Jesse, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, through the chair, the number for the middle school, do those, do the kids have to have the two shots before it counts, or can one shot get them in that percentage?
Yeah, so that's fully vaccinated, but the thing with the middle school is many of the sixth graders.
Just eleven.
Are just now. They're just now eligible.
Right, my daughter had one, so I didn't know if we sent that into the nurse, like, did she count yet?
Oh, yeah, so we're gonna wanna, we're gonna wanna hear that, get to that fully vaccinated point, yeah, so that doesn't include that.
Alright, I'm sorry, carry on.
So I suspect that that will dramatically change, right, once.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. So by the new year, maybe.
Just cause I, I have younger kids who have one shot under them, how are we going to get the cards to the nurse, cause I'm guessing they're gonna need to see the physical card, or how's that gonna work?
Yeah, so what we did with the older folks is we used ZipSlip.
Okay.
And we also told families that if they didn't want to use ZipSlip, they could take a photograph of it and email it into the nurse, to the school nurse, or they could bring in a copy if they wanted to do that, so we gave folks options, right, cause it's not always, one doesn't work for everybody, and then we compile that information.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, and I did just late this afternoon learn, and I'll be sending out information, that the town of Auburn is also running a booster clinic for folks looking for their booster shots, as well as their flu vaccines, for anybody in the town of Auburn, so I just got that late today, so we're gonna, we'll send that out so that it gets out there more, but that's another really good option for folks to get what they need. And when I wrote this last week, we had completed 825 now, 825 Binax Now tests through the Test and Stay Program since we began on October 13th. As of today, we're very close to 1,000, based on the last couple of days, we've had a couple of busy schools. So, it's allowed us to keep a tremendous number of kids in school, and also to screen in some cases, well, we have had a few kids who have come to Test and Stay and they've tested positive, so it's allowed us to have them get the help that they need to get better and, you know, to quarantine and all of that, so I just really appreciate Omama Healthcare from Worcester, who's been very reliable and responsible in showing up every day and being prepared to test kids, and it's really worked out quite well, so we're very grateful for that.
And I heard they're great with the kids.
They are, through the chair, they're absolutely terrific.
Yes, I will tell you, districts across the state didn't all have that same experience, so this has worked out very, very well, and they collaborate great with our nurses and all of that, so.
That's a great partnership.
Yeah, no complaints.
Through the chair, for systematic, symptomatic testing, a kid who has, do they have to go home after the test, or can they stay in school?
No, they can, so if they have one symptom, so if I come down and I tell you I have a throat.
Yep.
No other symptoms, I feel fine, I'm not tired, I don't have a fever, right, they check for a fever, no runny nose, don't have anything, they can test, they can stay in school.
Okay.
But if there's anything else present, right, no, I have a runny nose and my throat's a little scratchy, then the student has to go home, we don't even put them through Test and Stay at that point.
Okay.
Then they go home and they have to get a test, because once there are a couple symptoms present, the likelihood that it could be COVID goes up.
Right.
Right, so we don't want to take that chance. So based on these numbers, we've had over 800 kids that have been able to stay in school.
Correct.
Because of Test and Stay. Yeah, well, just know that when you go in because you're a close contact, you test for five days, so some of these are same kids getting tested for five times. Okay. So, yeah, but it's really been great, and it's, I don't know, the teachers are so happy, the testers are good about getting the kids in and out, they're getting them into school in a timely manner, so it's really worked out very well.
Great.
That's it for tonight.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone's been looking forward to this. Financial, Cecilia?
Such an exciting topic. Good evening, everyone. I provided in your packet a listing of grants received for the FY22 school year. There are nine federal grants and four private grants before that Dr. Hanfield spoke of earlier, that have been received to date. The town requires approval of all the grants received by the school department for the current school year, and I'm looking for a vote by the committee to accept the grants as presented. I'll briefly go over the grants themselves a little bit. We've received Title II A, $44,251, and this is utilized for new teacher mentoring and induction programs, for stipends for mentors and mentor coordinators for our new teachers. The IDA Special Education 240 Grant, we've received $597,924. Staffing for extended-year programming, two special ed teaching, teachers, out-of-district special education tuition, contractual services, special needs transportation, special ed supplies and equipment. We've received the Early Childhood 262 Grant, $17,789, which covers a portion of a salary for a preschool teacher and instructional preschool materials. We have the Title I Grant, 305, we've received $234,601 that assists with math and literacy professional salaries, a interventionist teacher salary, summer programming for students entering grades K through eight, and MCAS prep. We've received the Title IV 309 Grant for $13,002, and that covers professional staff stipends and supplies to support students and families specifically related to social emotional needs. Then we've also received ESER II, we received that technically last year, but we hadn't used it, the 115, which is $614,860. This will be used, some of it this year and a lot of it next year, for school counselors and social workers to address social emotional needs, teachers and support staff to assist with learning loss and meeting unique needs of students. We currently have applied for the ESER III Grant, the 119, for $1,411,780. We have not received our approval yet from DESI. The funds that we've applied for to continue to support newly hired staff in counseling, teaching and support staff roles for summer programming, and we also have money in there, or we've set aside a portion of the money to improve HVAC air quality in district school buildings as part of a capital project, so we are anxiously awaiting for that approval. I know that they've been delayed, a lot of the other school districts have been saying they haven't received their approval as of yet. The next one, the IDA Federal Grant, which is 252, for $139,828, which provides support staff positions, contracted services, text materials, and adaptive equipment for classrooms. And then the IDA 264 Grant, which, for $12,438, which assists with consultants and professional development for teachers and support staff. So those are our federal grants, and then we have the four private, which we've spoken about. We, you know, as Dr. Hanfield and Dr. Chamberlain have said, we're very blessed to have students, to have teachers who go out of their way and write grants to support their students, and Christine Robbins and Karen Sojin are just a prime example of that with Sarah Lemovitz as well, so we're very thankful for that. So I would look for your approval of those grants as of today.
Thank you for that. I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the listing of FY22 grants as awarded to the Auburn School Department as of November 4, 2021, for the FY22 school year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Through the chair, just thank you for all the hard work, everyone, to submit, I know, working on grants is not for the faint of heart, so this is really fantastic, these numbers are great, thank you.
Agreed, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote.
Okay, thank you very much. And in your packet, I've placed a year-to-date FY22 budget report as of November 4, and with the report, I have a list of transfers to be made in the same series, along with some transfers between different series that require your approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions relating to the budget or to the transfers themselves.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as presented.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote.
Okay, thank you all very much for your support.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
And I don't believe we need an executive session, do we?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?